Okay, we'll call the study session to order at 6:19. Dr. Vesely?
Good evening, President King, distinguished members of the board, colleagues and members of the audience. I would like to turn this over to Mr. Chris Herman, who is going to introduce the panel that we have available to kind of give you an update from our last session on the KTA expansion update.
Thank you, President King, members of the board, Dr. Vesely. We have basically the same panels we had last week for the study session with the exception of two, two people which I'll introduce here momentarily. From Orca Winslow, we have Tara and Mike, opposite ends here. From Kyrie, we have Dr. Lesher, Gianni, Eric, myself, and Mason's here as well. And then from Core, we have BJ and Jason as well. But the reason we're here tonight is based on feedback we heard from board comments and questions about having an independent third party be involved with this project. We reached out to FMG Facility Management Group to have them come in and take a look at what we were doing with our KTA project, looking at the GMP, and trying to give us a better sense of what they would see, some recommendations, and have this as an opportunity to speak with the board, help answer questions or ask questions and have a discussion. So I'd like to introduce Allison Soriano and Mark Rafferty from FMG. And for the duration, you know, we're all here for additional support, but for the duration of the study session, I'd like to turn it over to them to lead that discussion.
Thanks, Chris. President King, members of the board, Dr. Vesely, thank you. We are Facility Management Group. We have, I think we were probably called upon because you know what we do, and we've had a relationship for eight or nine months with the district, working on some lifecycle analyses. So we're very familiar with the district and we're familiar with these upcoming projects.
Would you mind explaining the lifecycle analysis?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
So part of our company is, is our lifecycle lab where we do an inventory of everything, every material in the district on every campus of a million and a half square feet, and we inventory every material that has a lifecycle. Those are things that you would plan to replace on a somewhat regular basis or a very regular basis. We put that into our database, assign a lifecycle period of time to each material, assign a replacement cost to each material, and then we go into the field, which we did all summer long, as you know, in your district, and we analyze those components and give them a grade. So maybe, you know, you've heard me say before, 60% life left on carpet which has a 12-year lifecycle. So at the end of the, that process, we're able to show, you know, we've looked at five year, right? We've looked at 10-year, what the costs to the district are likely to be just to maintain those components as they cycle out of their service life.
So for the audience members, all of that data that we've collected in all 25 schools will go into our 10-year facilities plan in terms of our new bond monies to make sure that we're addressing the needs of all of our schools and all of our campuses. And I believe you have a presentation, Chris, in January scheduled to roll out that information. I just wanted to give you some background information on that.
So the other part of our company is that we are project managers for bond programs. All of our clients are K-12, and all of our projects, 90% of our projects or more are bond-funded projects. We do work with some SFB-funded projects as well to help districts kind of coordinate all the effects to, you know, bring, bring the project to fruition. So we were asked, you know, so our, in our kind of third-party objective analysis of a GMP, we've looked at, and I'm going to kind of flip to the second page, which is, I'm not going to read our BIOS, but they're there. Oh, yeah. Allison and I have a combined experience of almost 60 years in architecture and construction and project management. We've been partners for 12 years, and the number of, so, you know, I'm, I'm the old timer. I've been around since before there was construction management at risk. So I watched it kind of come into the statutes and grow and become very popular and very dominant in, particularly in government purchasing. We've looked at, I can't tell you how many guaranteed maximum price proposals we've looked at over the years. It's been many. And we've really, I think, the, the industry has worked itself into a pretty high level of quality. There aren't many players that, contractors that made it into and stayed in this market that weren't able to put together a high-quality guaranteed maximum price proposal. So that's really, that's going to be our BIOS, if you will. So the, the GMP proposal represents the conclusion of the pre-construction process or services. We looked back at that and talked to procurement and, you know, we understood how the initial procurement of the, of the CM@Risk contract was conducted, because our first level of, of review is, is the statute. Is it compliant with the statutes? Everything so far up to this presentation. Our second level of, of review is, was it complete? In other words, is there particularly a complete, does a GMP represent a complete understanding of the project, of the parts, logistics, the site, et cetera? And then the third part, this is actually on the next page, the third part of our review is, was it competitive? Because the, the core obligation of the contractor that's putting this guaranteed maximum price together is to provide the best value to the district. I mean, beyond the, the sort of basic things of following the statutes and understanding the project, now it has to be competitive. And that's one of the things about, that, that we've enjoyed about CM@Risk as it's taken over, excuse me, from design bid build, which is often also referred to as hard bid, is that it's very, it's very transparent. And if you, if you get the feeling that it's not being transparent enough for one reason or another, you can ask for really, the district, for unlimited transparency. Virtually every document that was collected in the process is vis, is visible. And, and in many cases, if you need to, the contractor will walk you through the process of, of qualifying the scopes on those bids, and I mean, it's a very extensive process. So, moving beyond, so, just, I'm going to read a little bit of this. Scheduled development is very important on a project because you have so many customers that come to that, those sites every day for most of the year, 180 days. The project logistics, and that's very important, particularly on the KTA project, because of the fact that it's an operating school site, and there's parent drop-off, and, you know, lots of kids, and it's, logistics are huge. And, and the, the contractor in pre-construction is, is required or will automatically in, understand all those logistics and communicate them to the site people and to the administration. Material and scope options is probably the greatest benefit of pre-construction services in CM@Risk, because it, I, I like to say from the architectural point of view, you don't have to ever undraw something. You know, you can suggest a material that you want to use, the contractor will price it out or have their subs price it out, and it can help you decide whether or not that's, will fit within the, but, you know, that material or that, you know, extra classroom will fit within the budget. Excuse me. Continuous cost control is another thing. Even with the, the multiple phases, the schematic design phase, design development phase, the, the contractor in, in the proper process will be gathering information, talking to subcontractors, getting an idea what the market is, and reinforcing the progress of the design and design development with continuous cost control. Am I going too fast?
My job is to stop him.
Yeah, if I start talking too much. So when we reviewed the documents after having met with the district and, and having known a little bit about the procurement process, the first thing that, and Allison really did this, was she got into the GMP and started looking at the backup. And, and that is going to give us an, and talking with the contractors, pre-construction team gives us an idea of their, or they can, they can tell us of their understanding of the project. And, you know, once we've, we know what to listen for. And once we've heard that, we're either convinced or not that the, that the scope was covered. And also the depth of, I will say in this particular case, the depth of multiple competitive bids was above average for this project. Sometimes smaller projects, and it depends on the market, but sometimes smaller projects don't get as much attention from the prominent, or not prominent, but subcontractors that would be the best qualified for the project, but this was quite deep, so we were pleased. The question of general conditions, the general conditions are being applied at a rate of 6.8% on this project, and I think that, I made a comment earlier or one of our other meetings that on the small, fussier projects, 6.8 is, seems like it might be a little light to me. And I think we talked about maybe the project duration was compressing that somewhat, and, and so the 6.8 is a good, that's a good number for this project, in our opinion. Contractor overhead and profit applied at a rate of 4.75%. We consider that to be in the normative range of OH&amp;P for K-12 projects. And the contingency within the GMP is, the contractor's contingency is set at 2.5%. The, there's, and we're going to get into this now, but there's also a small contingency being held by the district outside of the GMP, just to make sure that if that, if something unforeseeable happens. So the way we looked at it, we saw several different arrangements of the, of the dollars and how they add up and whose responsibility they are. So we kind of came up with our own version of that. Starting with the GMP, this is just the contractor's portion and what it includes and what its total is, and that's what the document that you're going to present, BJ, right to the district will be that. Are we on the right slide? 4-8-10?
Yep.
So that has, the things that have been talked about, that has the west pop-outs, the learning stairs, the additional square footage, those, those items which have been articulated separately before, all rolled up into the 4-11-163. So, so there's the base GMP plus those added features, value-added items for $4.81 million. District-provided items, the roofing, special systems, and then sought costs FF and E and that 1.5% contingency are all in the 743, for a total of the 1-283, and the number which you've seen before as the total, let's call it obligation to the district, once all of this is combined, of $6,93,000. Go ahead. Oh, you want to flip it? So there was a question that was at, at the last, by the way, this can be very conversational. If anybody has any questions, please interrupt. There was a question about the shell cost versus the TI. And we talked about that pretty extensively. That's, it's, and I think you, you started to break out some of the, what we would basically call, we would call it shell, and then sort of the interior finishes would be the, the TI portion of that, right? It's not, I'm sorry? The TI stands for, it's a commercial term, it stands for tenant improvement. And so in a commercial, on a commercial project, the architects will, will delineate that on the drawings, what's shell and what's TI, so that they can be priced separately. And that's not typically done with government buildings or school buildings. So we can get an idea of what that is, but there's really, it's not really a, you know, clear delineation. Go. All right. So the three things that I mentioned before, this is like a checklist, that either demonstrate or not the overall soundness of this guaranteed maximum price. Compliance, completeness, and competitiveness. Again, I'm not going to read this, but as far as compliance is concerned, I'm, I'm more than, you know, convinced that this process was compliant with the statute, and we're very familiar with the statute. Completeness, just to reiterate, we saw no gaps in scope or scope understanding anywhere in these documents. I mean, we, I, I have an expression that I use that I like to see on a, on the cover sheet of a guaranteed maximum price proposal, which is horizontal and vertical. Horizontal are all the potential parts that are going to be in this project. And then, or vertical, and then horizontal is the base bid, the alter, this alternate, that alternate, and, you know, very spread out, very well articulated. And competitive, and again, just to repeat, that we saw this to be very competitive. I, I think that we saw out of the, is it 20, 25 bid packages, BJ, or that you have? 25, Jason? 25-ish. We saw four or five that were the, the lowest bid was not taken. Is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the next slide. Go ahead. Yeah. Where the, where the lowest price was not taken, but in, in the best interest of the district, we believe that the lowest best price was taken. I have indicated that there, there are a couple of reasons why you might not take the lowest price. I'm going to start kind of at the top. That, so 199 bid packages were sent out, so those are requests for bids, 129 received. I think you've heard these numbers before. Bid packages or scopes with three or more bids submitted, 80% of the bid, 80% of the packages, 14 had two bids, and 6%, which is probably maybe one item with just one bid. I think the total variation between just strictly taking all the low bids and taking the lowest best bids in those close calls, the total was about $50,000. I think we rounded that up. And I'm going to read this, with the exception of conditions that are not foreseeable, there is a guaranteed maximum price for this project. So that means that everything that you, that the documents that have been drawn by Orca Winslow, everything that's contained within those documents you have coming to you on that site in those conditions, and the price is guaranteed. And the overall price is, is below the budget that I was given. So I, it, in conclusion, Facility Management Group recommends the district proceed with this guaranteed maximum price proposal. I do want to add just a couple of, this is commentary, so I'm, I'm done. I've made my recommendation, but commentary, my commentary is that when it comes to the advantages of CM@Risk method of project delivery, statutory selection is based on qualifications. One of the issues that we used to have with design bid build was, many times the, the partner that you ended up with in the construction process was someone that you didn't know and may not have even met, and qualifications were never something that were considered. It provides critical cost and logistics collaboration support to the design team, and that's huge. Having spent, you know, over 20 years on the design team side, you know, we know what that type of, the benefit that that type of collaboration brings to the process. The bidding process, that, properly done, and it was, the bidding process includes maximum competition among qualified bidders. So that means that, you know, each contractor that is a, a CM@Risk service provider for school districts that we work with, and we work with all of them that do that, they have a list of qualifications that a subcontractor needs to meet. They're all slightly different, but they're fairly critical. I mean, it comes to bonding capacity, their ability to bond their work, their insurance, their, their safety records, et cetera, those types of things, and their, and their performance records, whether they've been involved in litigation. So you get rid of those people by setting up qualifications, that, a wall that they can't get through. And as I mentioned, the open book cost and contingency management through the construction process, meaning each, every time, amount of money needs to be used as an item that would be considered a contingency item. The contractor has to provide a contingency use, use authorization form for the administration, and the administration has to actually authorize that use of contingency. So there's no, there's really no discretion on the part of the contractor with respect to the contingency even that's held within their contract, within their GMP. One of the other concerns, I think, was that once these trade packages or these bid packages are bought out, meaning once the contract is signed between Core and the subcontractor, the price may not be exactly the same as it is right now. They may refine the bids more, right? I mean, that's a continual process right up until the time. So, and, and oftentimes that results in the price going down, when, when scopes are, you know, they make sure that everything's either in there or not overlapping. And when the price goes down, then that line item value goes down on the, on the spreadsheet, and the, any money that was saved goes into contingency, and that becomes something that you have to authorize the use of. I think that's it. I, our philosophy when it comes to these projects is, is, we talked about risks the other day, safety, security, financial, and operational risks. And I think this is a, a good platform to mitigate all those risks in advance. Thanks.
Mike?
I just have a few questions. I couldn't help myself. On page one, you have a typo. You have university if Arizona versus of Arizona, but, yeah. You, you might want to fix that.
[laughter]
As an NAU graduate, I find fulfillment in pointing that out. One question I had was the, under the general conditions are played, applied at a rate of 6.8%. Could you just clarify of what total number that is? And I don't, you know, whether it's the Core guys or?
The total for general conditions is $268,000.
No, but it's 6.8% of what number? Is it the GMP number?
Correct. No, it's direct, direct, $268,000 is the, the total, and I'm not exactly sure the percentage that 6.8 was based off of. Direct cost.
But I guess, go ahead, please.
So, in this front sheet on the GMP, my understanding is, and we talked about this extensively yesterday, there's a, a, what I would refer to typically as an unburdened number, so that's the total of all the trades.
Mark, excuse me, could you please talk a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Somebody. So it's a total of that, that, and you have a word that you use to refer to that, but it's a total of all of the trade packages equals basically the cost of the work. Now, beyond that, general conditions are applied. My understanding is that general conditions, the divisor on that is that number, right?
Yeah.
Do I need to get out my sheet?
No, no, that is the general.
Okay. So it's not the bottom, bottom number? So you don't, in other words, you don't charge general conditions on profit and overhead or on insurance?
Well, that was my question, or, or our own furniture.
Right.
Right.
Oh, no, it has, and it's not, all of the owner-provided items are completely separate from that. And that's why you're carrying a contingency within that.
Right.
Et cetera.
Just another comment. You touched on a little bit, the TI and shell, you say that's not, you know, usually in government projects, that's not seen, that's more of a private sector thing, but that could be one of the reasons why government projects are often more expensive than private projects, right?
Well, possibly. I mean, it's, I think the, the underlying thing there to me is that it would never be anticipated that the shell would be purchased or procured separately from the interiors, whereas I haven't done commercial work for a number of years.
But a developer could build a shell spec and wait until he finds a tenant to do the interiors.
Or they use the shell price to compare to the tenants' architect, you know, what they drew and.
Sure.
It's a lease value thing at that point.
Right, okay. Thank you. That's a good point of clarification. That's it. That's all I have. Thanks.
Bernard.
Hi there. Thank you. Thank you. One of the questions that I have is, I just want to clarify, what is that contingency amount?
2.5, sorry. The dollar amount?
Yeah, the dollar amount. And the percent, since you're?
It's 119. Everybody's reaching.
It's $119,878.
Oh, one night, so it's lower than I think I thought. So, so it's, just so I'm clear, so what was the percent then?
2.5%. That was the contractor contingency, then there's 1% for design contingency.
And one, and there's 1% for design, is what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I don't know why I had like a two-something number, and I know it wasn't the general conditions, but one of the, so the 119 then is the contingency amount. So, you know, one thing that I would possibly propose, just because, you know, we've, I mean, I, I, I would like to say that, you know, from the beginning, the inception, you know, this governing board, just to make it very, very, very clear, never approved 18 million or 17 million or whatever fictitious number that I've seen floating around out in the big world wide web. This governing board approved 6.2 million as a maximum amount, and with that amount, it was not, that was just kind of a place to, that, that we were never going to go above that. But what has happened since then is, this number has gotten much lower. And I just want to make that very clear, that, you know, I think every single person up here has scrutinized different segments of this process. So it's not like we're all sitting up here and not being cognizant of the taxpayers or how, we're asking some tough questions, and some of us happen to know a little bit more than some others just because we're in the industry. And, you know, like Mike said, those are good questions. Like, I, I don't know the leasing world, so, but, you know, for those of us that do know, we definitely will ask maybe some questions where it's different than the private sector. And so maybe what I propose is, with that contingency, and I've been put, been told under, I'm under the impression that anything with contingency has to be approved through the district, so if there are any overages or those funds are there, the contractors cannot spend and touch that money. And, and I think that that is important to me. And then what I would propose is that before anything was to be touched in that category, that this governing board was able to possibly look at it, to be alerted about it. And again, it might be overreaching, but, you know, I, I think that just secures to some level, you know, that additional level of scrutiny that, that, that we may want to have. So I don't know if that's unreasonable. So that's just something I'm going to throw out. And then I think, I think I'll stop here, and if anyone else has questions.
Hey, before I, before I ask Dr. Vesely to come on, the contingency is part of the 4.8 million, right? So that's what we're, that's the GMP, is 4.8 million. So I understand that you want to have some oversight over use of the contingency, but if the contingency is what it is and it's part of the GMP, I'm not sure how that's going to change anything.
Well, I think what it means is we approve the gross maximum profit, but price, sorry. Sorry. But when it comes to using the contingency, isn't that like if there was an overage or there was a change order type thing? I mean, I think that we just want to know what's going on throughout the project, if there is an issue that might arise. And, and again, I don't, I don't know if, again, I'm not familiar with the gross maximum profit piece of this, but I think it's worth just asking, so, sorry.
May I respond to that?
Dr. Vesely?
I think to, to your point is that we've worked so hard on getting the scope so close and really having so very, very many meetings to really be incredibly accurate that we really feel that the pricing is very, very accurate and that that contingency, hopefully we won't need that at all because that's, because so much work has been done in advance of the GMP. And we are stewards of this money, and so it's our responsibility to ensure that we're doing the very best that we possibly can to be good stewards of the money and to certainly live within those means and to not dip into the contingency unless absolutely necessary. And I think Vesely, did you want to add?
So I have two points to talk about. I think one is that, I think if I'm not mistaken, the overall contingency is 255,000. It's 5%. So there is a project contingency and there is a construction contingency. So there is a project contingency and there is a construction contingency. So what BJ mentioned about was the construction contingency, and I'll give you an example, and we can have the board look at the usage of the contingency, but for example, while we have the footings dug up and the city inspector comes out, and even though the city has approved the plans, they might come out and say like, we want to add one rebar per footings. And we need to do it right away. So we would then, if we were to kind of bring it back up to the board, it might take a couple of weeks or your next meeting. So we might need that flexibility to keep the construction going and not affect cost further because they've dug it up now, work stops and delay and things like that. So that's where the construction contingency comes in to be used. The project contingency above the 70 or 100, whatever you, number you said. 119. 119 is the district contingency, if we were to dip into that, then that's a different issue where we can come and take permission for that.
I'm just, thank you for clarifying that because I was, I was around that too, something I said that, so I, thank you, because then I can keep it all in track in my mind because that was a concern. And, you know, I'm hoping that with FMG, that, you know, let's say the city comes out, I mean, we've had this happen where, I think we're in Chandler, the city of Chandler's come out and said, you need to have this size of a pipe. Well, we said, you know what, we think that it could actually be this pipe and save money. And I, you know, that's where I want to make sure that we've got that third party amongst all of us that are saying, you know, just because the city of Chandler's saying that the pipe needs to be this size, that we actually could really use this other size and save $60,000. So I, you know, those are areas that I think, again, it's coming from the private sector where every penny counts and we're stewards of the taxpayer dollars. So we just want to make sure that when we start getting into that, you know, that, that there's that oversight, and I think that's just important for us to let the community know that we're paying attention. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, towards the end of my last comment, I had some other questions and I couldn't find them, so, and this might be a Chris Herman core construction, but is there in our timeline, because I know we're shooting for a, you know, call it August 1st or, you know, the building done before first day of school, do we have a plan in place in case, to use the word contingency, a realistic scenario, they start digging up footings, they find pottery, now we have to have an archaeological study and it's delayed three months, which could really happen, but hopefully it doesn't, knock on wood. Do we have a plan in place for that? Does anyone know?
We would get a plan in place. And what I have seen happen in previous districts that I've worked in is that we would set up temporary classrooms, we've done the library space, we've looked at other space within a school, and we just had to set up a temporary classroom until we got through those obstacles.
Okay. And then that kind of goes to my next question, which is, let's say with, we get all the, the best luck in the world, everybody's kicking butt, but for some reason, something happens, what happens at that point? In other words, is there a penalty to the contractor for not delivering on time or do we have delays in our, do we have enough calendar days of breathing room, if you will, to hit? I'm just concerned that, I'm very concerned, you know, to get this project done, especially with a lot of the moving parts that we have, that if there's some, we could get a rain delay when we're doing our footings, which could happen. So I, that happened to me in Gilbert, that set me back a month, so do we have something in place for that or not?
Well, the good news is we're not displacing any students, so the bad news is it is a very tight schedule, as you alluded to. There, the contract set up to where there are liquidated damages, there is a penalty for, for delay. So beyond damaging our reputation, there is a contractual dollar amount established, so.
No, I understand, I just wanted to, you know, I know, they want to build it and get it done and, you know, kind of get on to the next job, if you will, so I just wanted to make sure that was in place. And then we may, just as a best practice, Chris Herman and Dr. Vesely, get a plan, whether it's, you know, renting a couple portables for two months or something, just so we have the number. Hopefully we won't need it, but be a good idea to do.
Mr. Mirek, we also have a weekly construction schedule, so they come up with the overall project schedule and then we look at it every week, and they have a two-week look ahead and then the overall schedule, we compare that. So if we start seeing that certain materials, like HVAC units didn't come on time or the trusses didn't get on time, we ask them to come up with a recovery schedule. So keeping the end date the same, what's your recovery schedule? Is it working after hours? Is it working? Because it's not, no fault of us that that has happened. So they come up with a recovery schedule and we, we monitor that. And after checking that, and in spite, we feel that the opening date is going to now run into the school calendar day, we would know early enough that, that recovery hasn't been able to happen. And that point of time, probably by March or April, we start to say, okay, this, in spite of all the efforts, it's not going to happen, continue with the efforts to make it happen, but let's start putting a contingency plan in place. Thank you.
Okay. My question has to do with the district provided items. The part that's the 743,000, that's the soft cost, the FFE and the contingency, how much of that 743,000 relates to the contingency on that side?
It's about $72,000.
So not very much at all? Okay. Is that enough? It's like 1%, right?
It's 1.5%. And that's typically what we've done with projects in the district in the past.
Okay. Are you feel pretty confident about the roofing and special systems costs that you have there?
As far as managing those outside of the contract or just in general?
Well, the roofing cost is 250,000, the special systems is 289,000. Are you guys feeling pretty good about that? I mean, done, you've done enough roofs in, in the buildings we have to be pretty close to that.
And certainly Mason is available if we'd like him to speak to that, but because he's been managing a lot of those projects, including the roofs.
Yeah, that's why I was looking at him, because I'm pretty sure by now, Mason, you, you've had a, a good chance.
Yes, those numbers are hard bid and they are right on track with our numbers we've seen this past summer with Aki Mill and Esperanza.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, I appreciate it. The project is, has, have a lot of eyes looking at, a lot of hands on it, so thanks a lot, appreciate it. We will reconvene at 7:05.